I will call to order the school building committee and the school committee meeting for June 12, 2025, and we will do a roll call. Jill, would you like to start?
Sure, Jill Fowles is present.
Jane Reggio, Building Committee and School Committee, Millville.
Sarah Peters, CPAC representative and Blackstone resident.
Carrie Goddett, School Building Committee and School Committee, Blackstone.
Erin Panaco, School Building Committee, School Committee, Millville.
Charles Dunton, School Building Committee and School Committee, Blackstone.
Joe Spagno, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pill-Gallerani, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Sarah Larkin, School Building Committee and School Committee, Millville.
Tara Scobie, School Committee, Blackstone.
Scott Heebert, Director of Facilities.
Rachel Anderson, School Building Committee, Millville, Boris Leckman.
Jeff Silverstein, School Building Committee, Blackstone Finance Committee.
Matt Catalano, School Committee, Millville member.
Peter Olson, School Building Committee, Blackstone.
Mary Bolso, School Building Committee, Blackstone and Blackstone, Leckman.
Jennifer Deanwing, School Building Committee, Millville, Perrin.
And our designer and project manager teams, please.
Christina Meligan, Colliers Project Leaders.
Mike Carroll with Colliers Project Leaders.
Greg Smalley with DRA Architects.
Great, and I will now open the public hearing, and we'll just do that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our public hearing is now open. Jason, would you like?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Just want to thank all of the committee members who are here tonight. A lot of work has happened to get us to this point, and it's been many, many people hours behind the scenes to get to this stage in our process, so I just want to thank everyone for their time, effort, and energy on that. Also, I'd like to thank those who are in the audience tonight for the public hearing. We look forward to, if you're going to, you know, share your insights and thoughts, we look forward to hearing them. And to our family and friends who can't be here tonight, that might be tuning in from home or may see this after the fact, please know, and I want to really underscore this, this is not the last time that we will be having public conversation about this project. As many of you know who have been tuned into this project, started around 2020 as far as the capital plan, there has been so much discussion, and there will be so much discussion from this point until we bring forward a vote to the community sometime in the spring of next year on whatever project and configuration is put forward. So if you are not able to be here tonight, please don't be worried about that. We are having the public hearing tonight because we need to give direction to our architect, Greg from DRA, and our onus project managers from Colliers, that's Mike and Christina, who are overseeing the project. We need to give them direction for a submission that is due to the Massachusetts School Building Authority at the end of August, I think it's August 28. That submission is called a preferred schematic design. I will get into the detail of that, I'll leave that to the experts, but a key piece of that, you may hear it called, I think it's a PSR? PSR, okay. So it's probably not design then, it's probably preferred schematic, something else.
Report.
What is it?
Report.
Report, sorry. But a big piece of that is the actual grade alignment in terms of what we're looking for in a potential new or in a renovated or building with an addition. So tonight, we're here to talk about that. But again, don't be anxious if you are not able to make it, there will be lots and lots and lots of public conversation from now through next spring. So thank you, Madam Chair, for that, and then I'm going to turn it over to our architect.
Thanks, Jason, and tonight, we will try to focus on enrollment and potential grade alignments and what that impact may be as we develop this building project a little further. The district submitted what's known as an SOI, a statement of interest, and to do that, you need to identify what you might want to be at the end of the project. And the district has grappled with the grade alignments and how they fit into the buildings you own in the space that you currently have. So we looked at the enrollments that went in and compared that to your current enrollments. In this graph here, if you look at the bottom four rows where it says totals six through 12 down to totals nine through 12, and the leftmost blue box, series of boxes, is your current enrollment as of October of this year. And it's showing in six through 12, 804 kids, seven through 12, 678, and eight through 12, 564, and nine through 12, 428. We forecast that out, projected it very roughly out over a decade, and you see it will increase by about 10% for each one of those enrollments if you continue to grow at the pace that you've been growing post-COVID. So since the SOI was submitted and that enrollment projection was completed, things have changed a bit, and the MSBA approves the enrollment that you submitted, and they stay with that, so that becomes a factor as we move along. To get to tonight, we had polled the Building Committee and the School Building Committee as to what their preference may be for alignments of the grades, and we were doing that to set the groundwork for tonight's meeting and for some other information gathering that we have done. So we'll take the four alignments and look at these. On the left of all of these, you'll see current school configuration, and it tells you what's happening right now. So Millville Elementary is the central office, JFK is pre-K through 1, Maloney grades 2 and 3, Hartnett is 4 through 7, and the high school is currently 8 through 12. If we were to move to a 6 through 12 alignment using the current buildings, it would most probably work to the district's advantage if Millville became grades pre-K through 2. The enrollment that we're seeing in pre-K through 2 fits nicely into that building. JFK would work well to suit the central office. Maloney would essentially come offline from the needs of the district. Hartnett, where we're sitting, would fit grades 3 through 5, which it does quite well, and you would build a new school for grades 6 through 12. So that would be the largest configuration that you would build, and hence the most expensive configuration that you would build. On the next one, we look at 7 through 12, and current stays the same. Millville at this point would be grades pre-K through 2. Kennedy Central Office, Maloney comes offline, Hartnett 3 through 6, so it picks up another grade level here. Building can accommodate it, it would activate your lower level a little bit more than a 3 through 5. Good spaces down there, they're comparable on all the floor planes in this building, and the difference is that you're coming up to go to lunch and to the gym instead of down from the upper level. And then the high school would be a 7 through 12, slightly smaller, and therefore slightly less expensive to build. 8 through 12, we have Millville going to grades K through 3, and this from an educational point of view and from a building point of view becomes a little bit more troublesome. That starts to max out that building, it pushes it very close to its capacity. It also gets a little bit further away from what a lot of educators feel is a good grade alignment, age alignment of pre-K through 2. What it does is move pre-K over to central office, so now we have a standalone pre-K program, and we don't have the ability for pre-K and K to share any type of services or play, and the playgrounds are particular for pre-K, and K are playgrounds that the older kids can't play in. That puts Maloney offline again. Grades 4 through 7 is here now, and though this building was built to accommodate that grade range, education has changed a bit, and we would be stretching this building at 4 through 7, and 8 through 12 in the new school. So our new school's gotten a little bit smaller and a little bit cheaper to build, probably programmatically not the optimal. We think that 9 through 12 is the smallest building to build, it starts to run into the problems that were identified during the master plan of limited programmatic offerings, limited curricular and extracurricular offerings for 300 to 400 kids. Hartnett is now 6 through 8, Maloney's 3 through 5, Millville's pre-K through 2. So Millville is fairly well right-sized, Maloney is working fairly well, Hartnett works as a middle school, and the central office is taking part of Kennedy's. So the complex, the Kennedy-Maloney building, is working within its capacity, maybe not with the ideal classroom arrangement, but it's there and you own it, and it's in pretty good shape. So to set this up, we had polled, as I said, the Building Committee and School Committee, and the leanings were 7 to 12, 8 to 12, with 7 to 12 leading. We want to always get that first because there's two ways to look at a building program. One is from the fiscal side, what's it cost to run it? How do you maximize this? How can we minimize transportation costs? How can we minimize building operation costs? So we always lead with that, and then we follow with the educational piece, and what do people think is the best alignment from an educational point of view? In this case, we asked the staff at the middle school and the high school in a blind survey, in a relatively short window, we had a response rate that was, I think, north of 70%, which was pretty amazing. We're usually pretty happy if we get anywhere north of 20% on a survey. And we asked them two pretty simple questions, what grade alignment would you prefer? And then tell us why. And so their grade alignment preferences were 8 through 12 and then 9 through 12, and it was a fairly robust 8 through 12 response, which is not that surprising. It's a grade alignment that's pretty easy to understand, how everybody fits together, and the social and emotional difference between an 8th grader and a 9th grader is usually a little bit easier to comprehend than a 6th or 7th grader up to that level. So no big surprise there on those responses. And we asked them the second question of, tell us why, what's your thinking there? And there was no lack of answers, which was good, but there were a couple of common threads that we saw, and it's all stuff that starts to inform the School Building Committee on how to configure the building, how do you accommodate what educators are telling you they feel would be best for the kids. So their concerns were about the maturity gap between grades 6 to 8 and those in 9 through 12. That is pretty much a given and has been as long as there's been public schools and that age range. That was seen as probably a neutral, it's something that you could address in design of the building. Providing early exposure to high school expectations, that I guess is a more sophisticated way for what we've been saying, is that you can offer a larger curriculum offering, more extracurricular, more sports, more activities for the kids. The teachers are looking at it from the professional point of view, there are role model opportunities, there's the ability for modeling of expectations on both diligence with schoolwork and application to social environment that is available if the building is put together. And then one of the guiding themes was if the younger grades are included, consider doing it in a dedicated space within the building, so a separate wing, a separate house, an academy. And that was expressed most strongly for 6 through 8 or 7 through 8, and then even somewhat at the 8th grade level. Find a way to give these kids a place that is essentially theirs. And conversely, there was a number of statements saying, give the broader high school to the 9 through 12-year-olds, let them create some pride in the high school being their place and their building. So we thought that that fit pretty well with expectations, provided a lot of guidance. There's 80-something comments in that survey that we'll review with the Building Committee as we move forward. What we wanted to show you is a model school that we've talked about a couple of times with the committee, it's West Bridgewater, which Mike's group was involved in as the OPM. And what we want to make sure is that when we talk about an academy within a building, you're not conjuring up something that looks foreign. It looks just like a regular school building, and what we're showing you on the screen here is the, all the way over to the left is the first floor plan, which has the publicly accessible pieces to the left, so that's the gymnasium, the auditorium, those type of areas that the public may use when school is closed. And on the first floor, if you go in at door number 1 on the bottom and go to the right, you're in the middle school. So that's the lower grade configuration separated off by entrance and separated off by activities, and it has the admin suite at its entrance. So if there is a feeling that a high school or an older guy may make it down into that area, they have to go past the admin suite. And so you can set these buildings up to work in a way that they become self-controlling. And then the second floor plan in the center of the page is the upper level, so where it says 4 and 5, that's the upper area of the gym and auditorium. What really matters too is from 2, 13, 14 over to the right, that's more or less the high school, those are the high school classrooms.
Excuse me one minute, Greg. Is there a virtual option for this? People are asking me.
What do you mean?
Can people?
Like type in questions or ask questions, or do you mean just watch it?
No, ask questions or, no? Okay.
It's streamed, I mean, it's on, they can watch the meeting.
Okay.
So that's where we are with trying to fill in what were some of the potentially lingering questions over grade alignment, and so if we cast ourselves back on what we talked about with the committees, then this current survey and the potential rearrangement of the spaces that you own, it will help to inform a bit perhaps on what might be the most economical way to move forward, both in upfront costs for the new building to be constructed and then operational costs moving forward and taking care of the buildings that you own now. With that, I will turn it back to you and take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments, questions? Go ahead, Jeff.
Greg, could you just go through, we have preliminary costs attached to each one of these alignments, and we know that they're going to need to be modified, but there are millions of dollars in difference between every single one of these grade alignments. So I think it would be a good idea just for the public to understand that whichever grade alignment is selected, that there is a significant financial impact. So I just wanted to see if you could sort of go over that a little bit and give us a rough idea as to what the differences are going to be.
Well, you're right in characterizing it that there are some pretty broad differences as you move up, and there are, and Mike can jump in here whenever he wants because this is the part of the submittal that he put together, there are preliminary cost documents that we need to put together by state requirement, and that's what you're referring to. And the shorthand, if anyone hears, is a Form 3011. That's the form that we're talking about now, and it's kind of the, fair to say, the first formal try at identifying all the costs. And it's, and "formal" is in quotes in that one because it is very broad. And what we're trying to do is establish a potential building cost, which is everything that is bricks and mortar and goes in the ground and stays there, and then the soft costs, which are all of your professional fees, insurances, carrying costs, bonding costs, furniture, technology, all those pieces that, as I describe it, if you take the building and shake it upside down and it falls out, it's in the soft costs. If it stays in the building, it's in the building cost. And then there is a piece on that that projects the town's share versus the state's share. Where it starts to vary is as you develop more site for a particular format, the town will carry more of that cost because the state limits its involvement or its participation in site costs. Fortunately for what we have over there, that site cost is probably going to stay pretty similar, no matter what you build. That site is pretty well defined on where you can get to it, and so if we put a smaller building, for the sake of this discussion, if we were to build a smaller new building down where the soccer field is, getting to it is the same cost whether it's for 9 through 12 or 6 through 12. Building down there is the same cost for those two buildings. So site cost is less of a factor in this as it may be in some other sites that we've worked with. The furniture cost is incremental for every kid that you add to this, you add a cost for the furniture and a cost for technology. So that's almost a one-for-one cost increase. The buildings probably reach a threshold where they jump.
It does. So I had created different cost models for the different alignments and provided those to the district because they asked. It is pretty early for me to do that with that 3011 form, that 3011 form is typically more, we touched base earlier about the preferred schematic design, which is part of that preferred schematic report, usually we're doing it at that level at that point, but we did try to do it here. So as the buildings get larger, there's a cost per square foot to build a building, larger buildings cost more money. But the other thing to keep in mind is, as you look at grade configurations, I need a certain size gymnasium to fit a basketball court in it, for example, and if I have 6 to 12 alignment or I have 9 to 12 alignment, that basketball court's not changing size substantially. So as you grow the number of students there, eventually you might need two basketball courts if you have a higher enough students. We don't have that in any of our situations. But it's similar with cafeterias and kitchens and things of that nature, that you need a minimum-sized kitchen just to have a functional kitchen, and to double the amount of people that that kitchen is serving, it might only get 15 or 20% bigger, you know? So there's a certain, you know, I have to have a minimum of 1,000 square feet, and to double it, it goes to 1,200 square feet or something like that, it's not a lot more. So I think while the larger enrollment gives you larger buildings and greater cost, the services that you get are greater as well, and you have that economy of scale with a lot of those other departments that can service, you know, art rooms, band rooms, things like that, aren't getting double because the enrollment got double.
Does that get to where you were after, Jeff?
I would prefer a little more specificity, and the reason, I think, I don't know, we seem to be dancing around this issue of the cost, but, and I understand that the numbers that we already have are very preliminary, but it's a very important decision that's being made here in terms of the grade alignment because it determines the ultimate cost of this project. And so I think the public, if they want to have some sort of meaningful involvement in this decision, they need to know, you know, what's the difference between the 9 through 12 versus the 8 through 12 and 7 through 12 and the 6 through 12? Obviously, the 6 through 12 is going to be a lot more expensive because it's covering more grades, it's going to require more space. My calculations are that that configuration is going to be something on the order of $10 million more than the 7 through 12. And then, I mean, we just keep getting, it's sort of a step-by-step process, but there are millions of dollars difference between every single one of these alignments, and I just, I think it's worthwhile for the public to understand that and to, you know, that's not the only consideration, obviously, that goes into determining the grade alignment, but it is a very important one, and I think we all know that the ultimate cost is going to be very important when we eventually get down to voting on this next spring.
Jeff, so to answer your question maybe a little bit more directly, so for those of you who don't know, the last Building Committee we had, or two ones ago, like we said, we had those draft 3011s. They were preliminary, they were making assumptions, it was just to get the ballpark conversation going, because to your point, Jeff, there's a lot of differences. But I guess just to throw it out there, for the 9 to 12, for the smallest option, again, high level, very preliminary, we were targeting somewhere around 120 million. For the 6 to 12 option is around 170. So to give you those numbers, that was the range, if you will, that we were, again, very preliminary, very high level, good cost estimates, just, you know, backing that up, but that was the range. So if that gets you more into that ballpark of what you were asking.
Yeah, and actually, can you sort of net out what the state aid would be so that you end up with a number that's substantially lower since you know that 55 or, between 55 and 60% is going to be offset by state aid?
Just to be clear on that, it's 55% of the eligible cost, and there's a lot of complications within that 3011 form, which we alluded to a little bit earlier, there's site limitations, there's demolition and abatement limitations, there's cost of the soft costs, there's reimbursement on furniture, fixtures and equipment, there's lots of different things there. So we have provided that as a high level, we're certainly happy to talk about it, but I just don't want anybody to think that these are the final, final numbers. Like, we don't even have a general building layout, these are based off of square footages, and really, it is a little early to be trying to nail down the numbers at this point.
And mind you, the 3011s that were presented were for a totally new option.
For each one.
For each one that we sent, so, you know, perhaps a little more efficient, I guess the assumption is it's doing it in one shot instead of different phased constructions if you did sort of the ad run over route. So I know we're saying a lot of caveats, but that hopefully is answering your question, I think, a little bit more clearly. Those also did show kind of those, what the estimated total maximum grant would be, so it did itemize those differences.
Right.
Jane?
Yeah. And I believe I'm correct in the assumption the percentages will change. If we build to what our numbers are now, not the numbers we submitted in the statement of interest, that extra cost is on the communities. Like, if we decide we want, so even if we estimated a percentage, it's going to change if our numbers continue to grow the way that we believe they're growing.
And that's why we are at grade alignment?
Correct.
Because with grade alignment drives program.
Right.
It drives not only enrollment, but it drives program. And so we're, the discussion on dollars is almost superfluous at this point because we don't know what it is. It's kind of like saying, I want a building, but it might do this, it might do that. We really need to nail down grade alignment, and then that lets us get into the discussion with what enrollment, what cohort size do you want to build to, and then what curriculum are you pulling in? And Jason's group did a wonderful job on the educational program. Now we need to parse through that and get a grade alignment that we're going to design to.
Right, so for the focus of this meeting, let's try to stay on grade alignment. Again, that will determine all those costs. I agree, Jeff, they're important numbers to know, but we do have to make a decision or have the discussion to make that decision. Does anyone from the public have anything they want to come up? Questions? Questions, comments?
If I may, just real quick, kind of what Greg was alluding to, to getting the thoughts of the School Committee, the School Building Committee, talking about financial and operations, sort of step one, talking to the staff results that you all just saw today on the screen, again, important to know educationally what's going on with what folks want to see. And I think most importantly, the meeting tonight was getting public comments of what you all would like to see in your building too. So that's the third and probably most important final step, so just wanted to say that before you opened it up to everybody. So thank you for coming.
I was just wondering what we're planning to do when we have, like, the extra space with central offices or entirely offline buildings? So like, for example, administration isn't going to use a gymnasium, they're not going to use like an entire lunchroom and stuff like that, so what are we planning to do with that extra space? Like, because that still has to be heated, if I'm right, right? So that would have yearly costs that are basically just disappearing into the ether as like administrative offices, nobody's playing in the gym presumably, you know? I was just wondering what happens to that extra space?
Sorry, I just can't hear. If we just keep up, I didn't hear that question.
I'm wondering what's happening with extra area in the central offices? So if a whole building has a central, it's dedicated to central offices, they're most likely not going to use the gymnasium or an entire lunchroom or most of the classes. So I'm just wondering what happens like with general heating costs, stuff like that, that over time, we just have those areas empty, and I'm wondering, are we going to utilize those areas if we're building more areas, you know?
I'll take a shot at it. From the point of view of a former town planner, you don't?
From the point of view of a former town planner, you don't ever go into a plan without answering that question. What you have in Blackstone Millville is a little bit unique, in that the towns own the two elementary schools. And so the discussion in Millville is pretty straightforward, because every time you're looking to maximize the use of the building or not use it at all. There's no half-use with that building. That suits the district. And I know you sit on, Millville, so when you're sitting there, you want to be very selfish from the point of view of the town. When you sit on the school building committee, you want to be very selfish from the point of view of the school building committee. So when I'm looking at this from a planning point of view, I say, let's maximize Millville. It's a nice little building, it really fits that age group. Maximize that and keep it in use. The Kennedy Maloney complex is more difficult to run as an elementary school, it's more difficult to administer. It doesn't have the situational security that Millville has. It has a major road on either side of it. So I'm looking to minimize that and that use. Plus, Millville owns it. So if the rental agreement now, I don't know it personally, but it's probably a triple net where the district owns all the expenses of running it, and if I'm wrong, someone can correct me. Typically, what would happen is you would, as you pick a direction, you would enter into a negotiation with the town of Millville and reverse that, and either just rent some space, or rent some space at something other than a triple net.
And you mean Blackstone?
Blackstone.
Blackstone, sorry. And so it becomes a part of the negotiation that would take place between those people in the town and the district, but not the building committee. The building committee's responsibility is to identify all of the potential issues and make sure that the right people are addressing them. And so your point's well-made. What are you going to do with this? Your question from your role in Millville would be if someone came to you and said, we don't need the Millville school anymore, do you need it back? That would be that discussion. If it comes down and you pick a direction and you say, hey, you know, we only need, you know, a quarter of the complex. Okay. Building committee should be saying to the school committee, go talk to Blackstone, and you're done. So the question won't go away. I'm not shutting that question down, because I'll keep bringing it back. I've been on your side of the table for about a third of my career, and you don't want to ever saddle a town with a cost that you don't identify. And so, well, well-brought, and let's keep it in front of us all.
So just, I brought this up in several school committee meetings. I'm also on the Board of Selectment in Blackstone. I've talked to the town administrator and the chairwoman and now chairman of the Board of Selectment in Millville. And these are the conversations that we've had, because it's going to be, the operational costs are the operational costs. Blackstone pays, you know, their share, you know, based on the agreement for the operations of Millville Elementary, and vice versa, Blackstone, Millville and Blackstone, Millville pays a share. So that's the conversations of, the school committee's had these conversations, I've talked to the administration in Blackstone and Millville for the potential use, because it is a Blackstone building. But with that being said, then, there's got to be some negotiations, because if that portion of the building is, say, used by Blackstone, then Blackstone's paying for the utilities and things like that, and not the portions coming from Millville. So that's, those would be conversations that are being had and will continue to be had.
And theoretically, Millville's annual cost could diminish, and Blackstone's could increase.
That's right.
And so.
I have a follow-up question. Have you guys looked at potentially moving, like, central offices? Like, I understand there's a limit, and if we want to add more, like, rooms, we would pay out-of-pocket, and the state necessarily wouldn't cover that? Have you guys looked at actually moving those central offices into another building, so building a couple more rooms? And then getting rid of a whole other building, and then you could have two buildings offline and have it three buildings in total being in use in the source system? Excuse me.
So it's, it has not, it has not come up. That's not to say that it can't. It's, it would be, it would be looking at your indebted cost, your bonded cost over 20 or 30 years versus your annual cost of using a building that you own.
Right.
And you would have to program out whatever central office needs. We don't see a lot of advantage, and Mike and Christina can find on what they've seen. The districts that we've worked with that put central office at a high school generally put it off in the back somewhere. And it, you have people coming in for early childhood entry screening to the high school, as opposed to a separate building that may have an age-appropriate playground where someone can park their kid for a little while while they're waiting for a meeting. So there are some pieces that go with a central office, and putting them, I think we see them more frequently at the elementary schools or an older elementary school, because they have those facilities. Most of the people that you're dealing with in person tend to be people bringing kids in to register them for school and whatnot. The high schools, their interaction with the public tends to be the school administration with parents. So certainly look at it, the request of the building committee will look at anything you want. We've got, you know, July, August.
I just wanted to point out, too, I heard you say, Rachel, would we look at a couple of, there's a lot more than a couple of offices, and central office just to consider, because I know you mentioned a couple, but we have quite a few. I just wanted to throw that out there, it would be quite a few, and it probably would be a wing, so.
The other thing just to keep in mind on that is that this is the high school project. So if we're talking about moving into the high school, that would be one consideration, but doing renovations in other buildings or things of that, that's not part of the consideration right now. We're showing you potential options of, if you did this at the high school, what are options that you could do outside of the high school? But that's not to say that that's all part of this project. It's part of the process, and you need to understand that, and that's part of your decision-making, is how, you know, what are the advantages of this? Can we take the building offline? Can we, you know, get better grade configurations than other schools? One of the things I see with districts oftentimes is, especially when we're doing a grade reconfiguration, is it's not necessarily just to benefit that building, it's to benefit all the buildings, all the students in the district. You know, I had a district that redistricted their middle schools from six to eight to five to eight. They wanted academies because of the age differences, but by doing that, they had six elementary schools that were all benefited because of that, by doing one project.
Just a reminder, I want to make sure our folks in the back can hear everything, just make sure everybody's speaking up nice and clearly, because there's no mics.
Thank you.
I see a lot of you leaning in, trying to.
Just to follow up on this discussion, how much space do we have allocated for the central office function right now in your planning?
In the high school? I don't think there is.
Not at the high school. How much, is there a number that we're using for? Okay.
Um, well, sorry. I know we had discussions about putting pre-K in the high school, but none of these have this suggestion anymore? Because you guys saw it was an advantage to put the pre-K in there, so you could have that opportunity for the high schoolers to be able to, you know, like, get that experience. I was just wondering.
Yeah, we still can do that. The question was about preschool, and if we were going to put preschool, it's, I understand, I'm happy to repeat it, so make sure everybody can hear. The question was, there was some conversation from the school building committee to put preschool at the high school for opportunities like Chapter 74 programs and, you know, additional pathway, early childhood pathway for the high school students. And Rachel was mentioning that in the configurations listed here, it's not on there. The reason you won't find it on there is because MSBA won't pay a penny for that. There's no reimbursement for that. So if that's something that we decide to do as a school building committee, then we can do that. So it can come, essentially, it can kind of come along later. MSBA's not going to reimburse for it anyways.
So this is, all these are entirely without any extra stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just the alignment. Yep.
Does anyone else have anything to ask? Ed, come on up. Can you just come to the table, so we can get you on the mic?
I don't know the rules of engagement at all.
Be loud enough.
In the configurations, and this might not be the appropriate forum, but do we factor in the additional cost if you go with the nine-to-twelve of bringing the AFM online? I would assume that's additional cost in terms of staffing and the funding, so I didn't know how much that factors in. I don't even know the costs of running a building, but it's just a piece that jumped out a little bit.
Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if we did that, we would need to go back to the four, the four-school model that we had prior to this year. So we would need to bring back online, a principal, a nurse, a head custodian, the whole bit. So that, last year, we had 11 and a half, there were 18 and a half positions total, but an 11 and a half of those were, the layoffs were because we consolidated our buildings. We would need to reinstate those positions if we were to do that.
Okay. Yeah, just because that would also then factor in those additional costs.
That's right, and those are ongoing costs.
Running it will be solved.
Exactly. Yep. That's a great question.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay. I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second. A second by Mary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All in favor. Okay. And we will move on. Chair, Chairman Keith from the school committee?
So we do have a full school committee with us this evening. So this is how this works typically. The school committee votes first, and then the school building committee. We do have it in our next meeting, at six o'clock's agenda, but I'll just, I'll take a motion from any member of the school committee on a grade configuration for discussion, or discussion beforehand, Jane?
Okay. So I move that, no, I'll actually read. I move, based on the school building committee review of all four grade configurations and the public, well, the community comments, there wasn't much public, but that's okay, that we move forward with the selection of seven-through-twelve grade configuration for the Blackstone Millville Regional High School Building Project.
Here's a motion made by Jane.
For seven-to-twelve.
Second.
Second by Erin. Any further discussion from the school committee?
So the reason I went seven-to-twelve is I agree with Vicky's comments and Jason's comments about potentially taking a school offline and not having four school buildings that we need to staff and house. And while I like six-through-twelve, those who were in our meeting last time, I understand that the difference between six and 12 is too significant for many, many people. Whether I agree or not.
Thank you, Jane. Any further comments? I'll put it to, because there's two groups of here, I'll take a roll call vote for the motion made by Jane, seconded by Erin, for the configuration to be seven-through-twelve. Jane?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. It's unanimous. Well, it's back to you.
And I will take a vote from the school committee, school building committee. So if anyone would like to make a motion with a grade configuration that you prefer.
Do we need certain language? Should I read your motion?
You could, yeah, you could.
If we wanted to be the same. I make a motion based on the school building committee review of all four, this is not people saying, no, no. I make, well, I make a motion based on the school committee's review of all grade configurations and the public comments received, that we move forward with the selection of seven-through-twelve for the Blackstone Millville High School Building Project.
Okay. Motion by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peter. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain?
Nay.
Rachel?
Yes.
Scott, yes. Tara, yes?
Yes.
Jeff, I'm sorry, Jason. Jill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay. The ayes have it.
I'll just say, for those watching and those at home, the motion that was read says XX grade configuration, so it wasn't a pre-written grade configuration. The potential was several, so.
So to our architect and OPM, you have your marching orders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time today.
But if you throw sixth grade in there, I'm not upset.
A motion to adjourn the school building committee. Second. Second by Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, school building committee is adjourned.
And I will take a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting for the five o'clock meeting, to return at six o'clock. So moved. Motion made by Matt?
Second.
Second by Tara?[1800.51]